Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Boss?
Present.
Piffia? Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Thromb?
Present.
Barnes? Miss Seale. All right. The first item is the approval of minutes. Darlene had some minutes and corrections, and I had some corrections in the spelling and the typo thing Cindy took care of, just some misspellings. But there's two changes that we will make, or hopefully make, on page 2 under Business and Discussion Items. On the purchase of flags, the sentence that says this project has begun by the citizen group is going to be changed to these citizens initiated the Bridge Flag Project, just to make it a little bit clearer. And then on notices, the very next page, page 3 of the agenda, where it says, the very last line of notices inhering, the Planning and Zoning Commission will review the comprehensive And then during their monthly meetings. So they are going to continue on doing that. So those are the only two changes that Darlene and I had combined, other than some little typos and stuff. Is there any other changes? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve the regular minutes, February 11, 2019, with such changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's 7-0. Jason is now here.
Oh.
Okay. All right, public comments. Public comments, is anyone who is not on the agenda that would like to share, give your name, your address, and your word? I don't see anybody out there that wants to come forward, so we'll move along to Business and Discussion Items. Michelle, would you like to share?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Weitzel here, representing Marysville Main Street. I believe in your pocket you should have our requests for the Mother's Day Market in the Big Blue River Days. We don't have, I'll start first with the Mother's Day Market. We don't have really any additional requests for the city, but I will give you an update on some plans that we have. We are working with the library and MCAC once again this year to bring in children's performance. It was very, very well received last year. We had probably one of the biggest crowds we've had in the market of recent years. So we're trying to build on that family-friendly environment. We are working with the local FFA for a fundraiser, for them to have some sort of petting zoo. We already have pony rides, so something fun and would give back to that organization in our community. We are working on creating kind of a, I guess I'll call it a fine art tent. We have some people that have said that they would like a cover-type space, more secure maybe for some finer art-type things that you might find at some of the larger festivals in larger communities. So we're working through that. Let's see, what else? Like I said, all the rest of the things regarding the barbecue tent, same location, all of those types of things. We certainly appreciate Main Street's partnership with the city on this every year and working towards the money going to, obviously, the Kestner House position, I guess you would say. So I would entertain any questions regarding the Mother's Day Market?
So are you getting that trout fishing?
We are. Did you look them up?
That sounds cute.
You should.
No, but I think I've seen them on TV somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. The MCAC and the library just picked the best, you know, family-friendly groups. And like I said, String Beans last year was an overwhelming hit. Felt like everybody went to the Mother's Day Dash Run, and then they all just came down, and there were just so many families there. I mean, besides the being very hot, which we really can't do anything about.
I was just going to say the tent was the big, or no cover was the big thing last year.
Yeah. We're going to try to have pop-ups for them. We're trying to work on that regarding like a stage, but we're kind of limited with that.
So you're just going to advertise for everybody to bring their own shade if it's hot?
Oh, I mean for the band, yeah. If you're a visitor, you're just going to have to power through.
Because I remember that.
Go take a break and have smoke.
That was the only negative thing I heard about String Beans, that it was extremely hot.
It was a very hot day that day. If you remember right, it was kind of rainy in the morning. It got very muggy this last year, so we're really excited. We have a great committee, an expanded committee versus in previous years, just a couple of us working on it. So me personally, I appreciate the help and the workload and everything like that, and the creation of new ideas for the event. I'm really, really excited about it.
I asked Cindy to pull the number of man-hours. Did you get that done?
I did, and it's in your folder. It's actually about 60 of our hours.
That's what I was just going to say.
And it's a few, and I think it was either 66 for that one and 60 for the barbecue, or vice versa.
Okay.
And there's like 23 or more hours of overtime that goes with the Mother's Day Market, because you require us to be down there in the park that whole time. We are not running overtime hours so much, but it takes, I don't know, 30, 40 hours to put the tent up and down by the time you add all our people together.
Oh, I was going to say, all the people together, yeah.
Yeah, because it takes five guys from the park. And it takes five guys from the street, and it takes probably 40 hours altogether to put that thing up and take it down.
Right.
So the city is contributing that to the event, if that's what you're saying.
Right. The barbecue and the car show, for those maybe that are newer to the council, I think this was on there last time, the barbecue and the car show bought that tent, I don't know, it's been maybe four or five years ago. And instead of the market renting it, the city puts it up both times, and that way we don't have to pay. It's like $800 to $1,000 for a tent. I mean, it's ridiculous. So we've confirmed the Van Lanninghams, we're excited about chicken barbecue.
Yeah, the only thing about the chicken, I noticed that, we always have leftover chicken. Are you cutting back?
Yeah, we are. We're just going to do 850 this year.
I think that's a great idea.
We can't fit 1,000. We served right at 800 last year, I think. We're going to start trying to, one thing we talked about is trying to, like, tell the local churches and their bulletins, like, bring your mom down for that day. We're going to try to do some more of that.
But they used to run out. I remember back when I used to travel to Marysville.
What happened this last year? Why? Because there was, something happened at the time. They, it wasn't ready on time. They get that in or something. So then people got tired of waiting in line.
We've talked about that. They walked away from the scene, really, last year, and a smoker went down, and so we were backed up. It was probably one of the worst.
I was going to say, because normally they sell.
We even appointed, actually Brian Fravel offered to be the liaison for Van Lanninghams that whole morning to make sure that somebody, I keep, I'm going to hit that, somebody remains there, because that really put us back like 20 or 30 minutes, and it's, I don't want to make anybody wait.
People don't want to wait that long.
No, and when it's hot and they've got hungry little kids.
I just noticed each year, you know, it looks like we had, based on the revenues and the number of chickens bought, there was about 200 extra. So that sounds great.
Yep, we're going down, and I will send out bids actually next week for that, you know, to our local places that provide the chicken and the coleslaw and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions on the market?
Move to approve Marysville Main Street's request for the Mother's Day Market.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right.
For the Big Blue River Days this year, we, like I said, have the same kind of requests and everything of the city. The only, I guess, additions or changes, we're working really hard, you know, we get so many people into town on Saturday, and the car show gets over and they're gone. So we continued the last, I think this will be our third year of having a band and things like that, but we had two kind of concerns that people said, number one, all the food vendors leave, and the wagon wheel's always packed, and I'm sure Empty Cup is as well, that they wanted some sort of food vendor down there that evening, which we're working on with a local business that's not downtowns, might get them some revenue from the weekend. And then we're also sponsoring a cornhole tournament.
I saw.
Just maybe to attract a different crowd. I mean, I think we always think, gosh, so many people are at the dance recital, that's a great event for the weekend, but not everybody's down there, and not everybody is a park person that's been there all day long. So we're hoping to attract a new crowd. Washington has done this, and Jessica Leese is on our committee, and has just, like, run with it and got registrations. Apparently, these are sanctioned events, like you can watch cornhole on like ESPN3 or something, so we're pretty excited about it.
So this is our first attempt?
Yes, yes.
All right.
It will be within a street that's already blocked off, so we won't be, you know.
So are you going to do it along Seventh Street?
We're going to, actually, no, it'll have to be like where cars were previously.
On the Broadway.
So it'll be kind of in front of my office, in front of where, like Boss Motors and everything is. And we're limiting it to 25 teams or something like that, so it's not going to be a big thing, but we hope it will eventually be a big thing.
Cool.
And then the only other, and it's not really a change, but with the change in the liquor law, I'm going to work closely with Cindy to figure out, last year we had like beer and wine, and we want to just do the same thing, but the licensing, I'm assuming, is going to change with the new liquor laws that go in effect April 1st. We're not serving liquor, I don't want that to seem like that, but.
But we changed our CMB to include.
Right, to 6%.
Yeah, because that's, like Austin told me the other day, they're just not, 3-2 beer's not going to be a thing, so that's not really a change.
Some craft beer.
But just to let you know, I'll work with Cindy to make sure we get the appropriate paperwork filled out for that, so.
And then, so Boss Motors.
Might not necessarily be available.
Yeah, are you?
We, I have been working very closely with Greg, and at this time, he said there should be, there's not a concern that it won't be available at this time, but he said.
There's no guarantee.
There is no guarantee, but we are working very closely with him.
So do you have an alternate spot in case they would?
It just affects barbecue teams, not cars, so we are just keeping that in mind as we accept barbecue teams. We're not near that capacity yet, so.
Well, it would affect, don't they do the registration right there at that tent?
Yeah, but that's technically, the city owns like that drive and everything right there, so.
On the east side of your office?
A portion of it, yeah. And from what I understand.
But I thought Boss. Just the drive, yeah.
I thought Boss Motors ever said their trucks right there.
They do, but.
There's a space between the drive.
So Marysville owns a little space.
They own a little driveway. A little driveway.
Oh.
Which we certainly overlap a little bit, but like I said, I have, Greg reviewed this with me.
Okay.
At this time doesn't see that there'll be any sort of problem, and we will adapt as needed.
Perfect.
So, Michelle, how does the parking work there for the nutrition site on Friday? This first one, for the barbecue, we asked to close the rail bed in that first item. How does?
It affects their parking. We have worked closely with Patrick in the past, which will be actually now, and we've even offered, you know, to provide some kind of shuttley-type service if they could park at an alternate location to bring them and.
Will they be able to park in that lot just south of Hellbringer, or you use that as well?
No, I mean, it has everything closed.
To the west, the west is what we take. And we've done it every year, and we always communicate that to them fairly early. We've never had any issues.
You know, there's those garages, and then there's some parking.
I don't know that.
Do we fill, do you fill that up?
You have south of the Hellbringer Center, you have both of them.
Yeah, and I don't know, it kind of depends, some teams, depends when the teams come in, but certainly by Friday afternoon, it is completely full. So like I said, we will, I've actually have, we actually, when she took over down there, asked me the dates and everything, so we're in communication with her.
Okay, because I was going to say, that's usually all full, so.
I know. We always encourage, well, a couple of years ago, they served fried chicken or something, which is apparently like a really exciting thing, and we were like, don't serve the best meal ever on a Friday.
Serve liver and onions, I bet.
Yeah, serve something that's not well.
Fried chickens are better.
I know that, because that comes out bad, I apologize.
I thought that you didn't allow at least being able to get through the Hellbringer Center and go to the alley.
I, I think that it's blocked. I apologize, Darlene, I don't have my map with me.
You mean on the back side of the building, on the side?
On the west, on the west side, and then at least allowing some parking there next to the building.
Where the handicap is.
And then people could exit to the, to the east during.
I think the people.
Down the alley.
Sorry. I think the people that work at the Hellbringer, because the bus still has to be able to go through right there, but it's, we don't want them back in that parking lot, because we already have teams that certainly, I mean, this says Thursday at 5 by Friday morning.
Thursday.
Yeah, it's Thursday, but it does affect it on Friday. Yeah.
And then the swimming pool passes, now how do, how do they, you give them passes to go to the swimming pool then?
Yeah, like every barbecue team gets two, and then every car show participant gets one. This is something that started long before me. I don't know if you have statistics on who goes. I mean, the barbecue teams, my guess is they don't go, because they don't leave their, they don't ever leave their side.
But they bring their kids.
Well, but a lot of them, their kids help them, so I can't comment on the car show, how many people use them.
Well, I don't think in the car show.
I don't think a lot of them get used.
Okay. I was going to say, otherwise, we could just open the pool for.
Yeah, I don't know. That would certainly be up to you all.
It isn't a lot.
It's not a lot.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
So you do give them passes, so they know who's using them.
Yeah, and it's for that day.
Yeah. Well, I realize that, I don't mind that, but I just thought, if it's a problem, just open the pool and have it open for everybody.
We've never had that many, did it?
Yeah, I guess.
You see some of them go, yeah.
Probably, the big distance is probably the cost for the passes.
I just wondered how you kept track of it, that's all I wondered.
They bring the pass to the pool, and the pool writes it down as a free pass at the pool.
But it specifically says for that date.
Yes, for that date.
Yes, it has, it has the date and the year, so it's not something that can be replicated or anything like that.
All right, no problem.
Yeah. And like I said, Main Street certainly appreciates your part, and the car show. I shouldn't be just speaking on behalf of that. I'm here representing Main Street, the barbecue committee, and the car show, car club, so.
That's, that's fine, I think that's great, so, no problem.
So I would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, this is just for the car show, the Blue River Days, that we do whatever Michelle needs, so.
Except that, has she presented? Request is presented?
Yeah, request is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right. The next item is Lynn Bargman, who is here. We're so glad you're here, Lynn.
Yes, I'm Lynn Bargman. Our family does pumpkins and more. Been doing it for nine years at Edstrom Hall, and is requesting again for this year if it was available.
Well, I think it's great that you have this to bring people to Marysville and have them hang out a while, so.
Yeah, we, last year, we had a lot of out-of-town people stop and purchase pumpkins and stuff.
I know when we were doing that geometric improvement, that probably hindered you because.
It did a little, but they still, people from Fairberry found us.
Good, good.
Waterville, Rappford.
Good, good. And you pay just $25 a year to pay for the electricity.
Yeah.
And, you know, our men move the equipment out and stuff like that, so that's our contribution to the project, but I think it's a great thing to have in Marysville. With that being said.
Move to approve Lynn's request for Edstrom Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Lynn, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
All right, Chief, you're up. Congratulations to the wrestling team.
Long weekend.
Yeah, your son did well. He medaled, praise the Lord.
Both my sons have medaled the state. I never even made the state. You're 10 times the athlete I ever was.
So are you giving the credit to Coach Fredrickson on that?
I did, you know, we talked about that the other night, that there's a bunch of us fathers that started those kids out when they were four years old, but we handed them off to Coach Fred, and he took it to a whole new level.
Yeah.
He truly has.
That's it.
Them working together, he's taught them leadership, he's taught them a lot of things.
I've heard really good things about him, so, that's great.
What I have for you tonight is, this is the grant that I sent out to you that we received from the Edward Byrne JAG Grant. It's a 100% grant. This is the one that we're going to transfer radios over from a single VHF radio to a tri-band radio. We'll be able to still talk to the city and the county on 800, the city on VHF, and the school district on UHF, all on the same radio. All of my guys, most of the time, carry two radios on their bodies, and Dave, when he has a school radio with him, is carrying three. So we're eliminating all that, plus we're putting a new base station and everything in for Ruth at the office as well. You see the bids in there? We do not have the local radio station, a radio supplier, but the major suppliers we have, one is Motorola out of Topeka, it's TFM Communications, and they had a bid of $52,088, $90. Now, KCOM, you see their bid's broken into two pieces. That's because the base station is a separate bid, other than the handheld radios.
That's the 55, 57? That's a base station there?
Yes, yeah, $40,075 are the 10, or, yeah, the 10 radios, and then the single 55, 57 is the base station with antenna on top of the building and everything.
Okay.
Now, you know, over on the, we have two antennas over on the building now. One of them is for VHF, we'll have it moved to the south side of the building, and there's an 800 there now that was put there during the jailbreak, when we had to have dispatch down there for almost a month, I think it was. They let us keep that antenna, so we're going to permanently mount it where it needs to go. That way, if anything ever happens again, they will come into that same desk, all the radios, computer, all the hookups are already still there, and we won't have to have, call a radio company in at midnight to do everything again like we did this time. But all this will be covered in this, so. I would, I would suggest that we go with low bid with KCOM for the Harris radio. Both of them are comparable radios. We looked at another company called, it's by Kenwood, it's EF Johnson slash Kenwood now, they do not make a tri-band radio, so, and they are what is sold over at Health Communications in Centerville. So we did not do those. And I spoke to them several times, and they passed on the bid. KCOM with Harris, they both can be submerged in water, so when officers are standing out in the rain, they will not affect the radio, and also the microphones have noise cancelling. They could be standing next to an engine down the rail yards or a fire truck, and they can still talk on it, because the microphone cancels out the noise when they're trying to talk, the background noise.
I need that on myself.
That would be nice. Well, each of these mics, as you can tell, are several hundred dollars.
Okay, maybe not.
And the one thing about Harris, they have a trade-in that Motorola does not. All they have to do is trade in 10 handhelds and a mobile that don't even work. As long as they have a serial number and a charger, they'll take them back, and you can see the discount there, we're going to save almost $6,000 by doing that. So I've already talked to the other agencies in the city, we're going to put a package together, send it down, and save us another six grand, to either we can have, make sure all installation costs are passed or paid for, or maybe we can get an extra radio we have on hand in case one breaks down or something. I didn't even know Harris had that until Rodde County actually called me when I was asking who all had Harris. Rodde County, all runs all Harris, and so they want me to go PD, they love, they love a good radio as well.
I know you said that both of them have a three-year warranty package. I see it where it is on the Motorola, but it's on KCOM, I just can't see it.
He told me that's standard with all the radios.
Okay.
Yep. And KCOM's also the company that sets up all our vehicles as well.
I move that we go with KCOM. It looks like around $45,632 less the trade-in discount.
No, that is what the trade-in.
That is with the trade-in.
Yeah, they were really close if I didn't take that off. They were within, I think, $1,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
To the city, I know this is a grant and everything, what's going to be the cost of the city here when it's all done?
Zero. Now, that's why I said it's a 100% grant, there is no cost to the city.
Even installation and?
No, installation of these radios is already in the bid. You can see the installation of the antenna. Now, if they move other antennas, he said we'll move them, because we're going to be up there anyway, but there's extra money here in case we need it. We actually, because of the trade-ins, we have more money than we actually need right now, but we will use it to make sure the system is right. But there is zero cost to the city.
That's music to our ears.
But this is the same grant that we applied, all our body cameras that the officers have, they were 100% grant as well. It's the same grant we just happened to apply for together.
So was that like three years ago?
Yes, because last year, remember, we applied for the radios, and they locked down the grant because of the sanctuary city lawsuit. That's why we automatically received it for sure.
Okay.
Because we're already pretty sure for it.
Cool. Any other questions for Chief? So we have a motion, a second to approve KCOM, which is the Harris radios. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0.
Within about three weeks turnaround, we'll have the radio system in.
All right, cool. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the Convention Tourism Wage Contract for Michelle Weitzel, and we did have a Finance and Admin Committee meeting this, right before this meeting to discuss it.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor was there, Austin came in late, Diane and Carrie and myself were there, and we, we looked at what was proposed, but we have a concern with, with the amount that, that was, was proposed. Our, our rec, currently with our rec contract, we are giving them $1,000 a year raise. I think it was like a three-year contract that we, we've given them. Our employees, we gave a 40 cent per hour raise, and our committee settled on $750 raise that we would like to propose for Michelle, and that would be almost 60 cents per hour increase, something like 58 something, because based on 1,300 hours. She supposedly works about 25 hours per week. Of course, it doesn't, you know, some weeks a lot more, probably some less.
I make a motion that we approve this $750 annual raise for Michelle.
So are you approving the contract in total?
The contract, yeah.
And the only change being the compensation to $20,750?
$20,750.
Okay. That was your motion? That was your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Was there any communication about this before this came out? I mean, has this been talked about in the years past, them increasing this year-over-year, this contract, or?
This will only be the beginning of the third year. So the first year, she wouldn't have gotten anything anyway, so she's only been here one year without a raise. This is the beginning of the second.
This is the beginning of the third year.
Right, but I mean, one year would have been the first negotiated.
2017 was when she came on board, and then that, so there's 2018 was her second year.
Right, so that year was without.
I did point out that in the job description that is on page 30, it says the maximum per year is $22,000, and that's in the job description, so. All right, well, there's no further questions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-1, all right. Moving along to, I'm not aware of any notices or hearings, so we'll move along to consent agenda. I'd like to discuss the two airport leases real quick, so we can go ahead and approve three and four, and then go back to the leases, if that's all right with you guys.
Move to approve consent agenda, item number three and number four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, okay. So the airport leases, the information that's laying at your desk, Austin provided, he said that it was supposed to be in there, but it, but it didn't, just to show you the different bids that were given, so I just wanted to see what they were, their ranges and stuff. But the other thing I wanted to ask a couple questions on is the contract, the lease agreement. Is this the same lease agreement that we've had in the past?
One that you just approved at the meeting in front of this one, I brought it to you. You approved these at this, that meeting and told me to add that paragraph 13. We brought the contract to you to approve before we ever took it out to bid.
Well, let me, so I don't understand, in section two, it says, the fourth line, it says, "Leasor reserves the right to terminate the lease early upon 60 days written notice." And then this is the part I don't understand. "In event the parties cannot agree upon the annual rent adjustment as described below." But our rent is fixed.
Yeah, it is now. So that probably, I mean, that, we didn't talk about that at the last one, so we did a lot.
Because the previous contract was a market rate.
Because of them working on the things.
Okay, so let's pull, let's say, written notice in the event, notice in the event the acreage is needed. We need that part in there, right?
Let's see.
So we just want to pull the first in, event the parties cannot agree on the annual rent adjustment?
Yeah, because that doesn't belong.
And then the second question I had was, I guess it would be just the next.
I don't know how we missed that the first one came through.
I know. It says, "In the event leasor gives 60 days notice of termination, the leasing shall have as remedy the reimbursement of annual rent for the year in which the lease was terminated." And if conservation work has been completed, the leasor will reimburse leasing the depreciated amount, but not exceed 50% of the original cost.
What that's indicating is that if, for some reason, this renter doesn't want to do this anymore, and he's done some terracing, something that we ask him to do, conservation work, we would reimburse him for that.
But on number nine, on the second sentence?
On number nine?
Yeah, it says, "Except as provided above in paragraph two, the costs necessary for completing any conservation work and such other improvements, including machine hire, shall be borne solely by the leasing." So why would we ever?
Because it, well, if he terminated, if we terminated him, I think that's, isn't that what it's trying to tell us?
In the event leasor.
We would terminate him, and he's already paid for conservation work. We would reimburse him for what he had done.
Even though he's paying for all the conservation work?
He's paying for it, but if we, we go to him and say, "Okay, you're out, because we're going to do the, we're going to fix a..."
In the event the leasor gives 60 days.
The leasor is us.
Right, the leasing.
So we say, "Okay," all of a sudden, we're going to, we're going to change the airport, and you have to not farm this.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
That's, that's why. It's in case he's paid to have something done, some terracing or something, and?
And then we terminate.
And then we terminate his agreement, saying, "Okay, now we want the land, and it doesn't matter what you've done."
Okay, so that was the only other change?
Yeah, that other one shouldn't have come out.
So just the one change we'll pull, and then on the other agreement.
Does it say this?
It also says the same thing in number two. It says, "Leasor reserves the right to terminate the lease early upon 60 days written notice. In the event the parties cannot agree on the annual rent adjustment as described below."
Yeah, it should not.
Okay, so we're going to pull that. Cannot agree in the event, in the event.
In the event the parties cannot agree on the annual rent adjustment.
Okay, so we'll pull that. Okay, and it's a set amount, let me see this.
So is it, is it number nine weird too? What is there?
No, that was the same. You didn't change number nine?
Okay.
Yeah, because it didn't talk about terracing. Okay, so those are my, just that slight change in both those leases, otherwise, the high bid obviously is in here at 128 per acre for the farm ground, and I assume the 51.
51, 51, hit one by 51.
51, 51. Okay, so I am okay with them, other than that slight change in the lease agreement.
Those are per acre.
Yes.
Does it not say per acre? Yeah, it does per acre there. Per acre, yeah. So I entertain a motion with that slight change to approve the lease agreements for the hay ground and the crop ground.
Move to approve the airport lease on the farm ground as amended. Move to approve, well, go ahead.
Okay, so you're doing the crop, crop land first?
Crop land first.
Is there a second?
Second.
At the 128 an acre, right?
Yep.
Okay, there was a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? You did make that as amended, right?
Yes.
Okay, now do the second one.
Move to approve the airport lease on the hay ground as amended. The high bid of 51, 51.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right, very good. That was done. Okay, the next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3693.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention some of the larger items. $72,086 transfer per budget payroll of $39,700, and then the breeding heights loan payment of $24,690.
All right, thanks for pointing those out. Transfer payroll and a long-term debt payment. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schröbler?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
7-0, all right, moving along to staff reports. Austin?
All right, first one up is the water tower inspections. Went out to bid, got three bidders to, to work with us. McGuire Iron, Suez, and Viking. Each of them turned in bids. One did a combined bid, just for a one-off price for all tanks, and it didn't matter because we'd need to inspect them all. And Suez came in at lowest for $3,190 to inspect all three, the two water towers and tension tank, using a remote operated vehicle on the inside and doing inspections on the outside, and the interior of the water tower, the sphere tank. So it's something to get us up to date, and we'll do this every two years.
Have you heard anything on this company?
No, they're, formerly, they bought utility services.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're, they're pretty, they're a nationwide company, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just put Suez in there because that's short.
I know that was on their head.
I think we did, we did use them for some of the major work on that 17th tower, so.
Yep, that's who they are.
That's good to know. Thank you for throwing that in.
Just curious. Yep, and they can do that this year.
Move to approve low bid to Suez for the water inspection.
For $3190?
For $3190.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. So just when you go out to bid like this, do you seek them out to bid on this?
I do, I, I mean, I've had people stop by and.
Well, this is really good job, because one was twice this.
Right.
So whatever you did.
I actually, to tell you the truth, they submitted a bid before, I told them we were wanting to inspect, so they submitted a bid, and I copied their, what they were going to do to our tanks, and then sent it out to everybody else.
Their specs?
Yeah, so kind of cheated there, but that's, didn't tell anybody else what they bid, but that really came in handy.
Yeah, well, it's good to get three bids, I'm very excited.
Yes. Truck bids is up next. It was kind of a complicated situation in how we did this, but I think we came out pretty well. Talked to everybody about bidding together. If they got all the bids, they could, they could muster through their shop if they could give us a discount. Only one of them said they would give us a discount on top of their already discounted items, and that was Honeyman, and they'd give a 200, if we gave them all the trucks, they'd give us a $200 discount on each vehicle on top of what they already give us. If you look at all the numbers, that $200 probably wouldn't amount to anything compared to the savings we would going with other providers. So starting off, the police vehicles, pickups, Ford came in from Honeyman at $38,606. I did put a new sheet on your desk, because the sheet that was in your packet didn't reflect the price with the extended warranty, the 100,000 mile warranty, so the price on the summary is correct, and the price on the new sheet on your desk is correct. So $38,606 was a $1,400 extended warranty.
Now, how do you know who this is?
Because this is a Ford.
I know, but who do you know, what company does?
Honeyman, it's Ford.
How do you know?
I think it should be on their letterhead, or, I mean, this doesn't look very official.
How do you know it's an official bid?
On the backside, it says Nemaha Valley Motors.
This one says Nemaha Valley Motors, but, let me think. There you go. This is, this is basically what they always look like when they give them to us.
I know, but they should be on letterhead.
I've never seen a bid like this. We, I mean, the one that Nordis gave us, and this, what's this one here?
This one's Nemaha Valley.
And that one has letterhead, oh, is that why you gave us, because it got chopped off?
No, I gave it because the original one didn't reflect the fourth out, Nemaha Valley had.
But see, on this, this next one, the Nemaha Valley Motors one, it cut off, you cut this off, so I had, I had a hard time telling that was Nemaha Valley Motors, but you have a letterhead. The other thing that made me nervous about this is, it says on the bottom, our subject, the price shown on this are tentative and subject to change or correction without prior notice. It says, "Refer to the vehicle invoice for final vehicle content and pricing."
Once, once we order it, they'll give us an invoice, and it will reflect this. Or we're not ordering from them. I mean, that's just what it is. They're, they're going to give us this price, and we're not ordering, we're not ordering from them in the first place for this one, if you go with our recommendations. But this is, this is how they all bid, every single one of them. They just wrote down at the bottom what they were bidding.
Well, I think, it makes me a little nervous, because it doesn't show that their contract, it doesn't look like a contract. It just looks like, but I, I understand on the first one, we're not using Nemaha Valley 325. Is that, is that this one?
So Nemaha Valley's right here.
But you're saying it shouldn't be, it should be 325.
Compare it to Nordis Motor, okay, they've got it on their letterhead. They've got total price down at the bottom. We can tell that is their bid from Nordis Motor. The other ones, we can't really.
Well, Nemaha Valley's at the top.
We couldn't see that before, though. That would, that would have been helpful, because it was hard to follow what these.
I didn't know it cut out, well, it says it right there, too. Ship to Nemaha Valley Motors. Nemaha Valley Motors sold to.
Where does it say it here?
Oh, it, wow, it really did a number on that. I don't know how it did that.
Okay, well, we're not using this bid sheet anyway, right?
Not for the, not, if you go with how I recommended, we would go with Nordis on the police vehicle, because it is a local bidder, and they're within the 10% that we said, set forward. So for the police vehicle, $34,964 for their Chevy 1500. For the street vehicle, a little bit more went into this. Ford was the only one that could do it at any dealership, get a 50, or F-550, which is comparable, if you, if you would, to 5500 and Chevy and Dodge. I was fairly certain that, after talking to the owner of the dealership and Beatrix, that they could do the 5500, but then I called them back, and their salesman says they can't. So that was kind of a holdup. But they said they could do most of the service work, so I just went a little further out just to see what the number would be, and they brought back a $42,500 for the Dodge 5500 versus Ford's $38,868 for their F-550.
But to see again Baxter has theirs listed on their bid, and then we go over here for Honeyman, you don't even know this is Honeyman.
Okay, so what, so I turn, what are you concerned about?
That they're make, that they're going to hold this contract. They have inside, I mean, there's like.
Hopefully they don't give us a price, though, I mean, we're just not going to buy the vehicle from them correct, so.
Well, for the bid, we need it to look like Nordis, on a letterhead with a final price.
It's got, it's got a final price.
Well, we need it on a letterhead, we need it for official looking.
So you can approve this contingent on if they're sending a, a letterhead.
Okay, but you need to make sure that, because that's very confusing. When I looked at this, it was very confusing, because I couldn't see any names. I mean, I had to search to figure out which one was which, and some of them didn't tie to your schedule.
Right, the two and the, and the police one didn't tie.
Yeah, so it was very confusing.
And I can, I can get that, yeah.
Okay, so next time, just make sure that when you get bids like this, that they have some kind of signs that they, that's their price.
Okay.
Okay. Did they do this writing in right here?
Yeah, they all wrote all their own bids.
So they could have put Honeyman Ford there or something.
Something, okay. No, I can get them to do that.
So going back to that, so the street one is 38?
868.
From Honeyman?
Honeyman, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then Parks, okay, Parks and Water and Sewer. Chevy apparently stopped making 2019 2500s and 3500s. They are gearing up for 2020, so they would not turn a bid in from Nordis, for anybody.
Not even for 2020, just for Grin?
No, we'd have to wait a year to get that done. They don't have any specs, they don't have any, that information. They already retooled for the 1500, so there, there's no more gap for that. That's why they can still sell that one. So they wouldn't turn in a bid, which I told them we were kind of.
Nordis, we're getting a 2019, right?
Right, 2019, 1500 for the first.
Mark?
Yes.
I was just curious, also, did we check, because any ship watch where they're, they're really discounting these 2018s, does that checked out? Did you look into that?
That they're what?
Instead of a 2019, or 2019, the 2018s are really selling pretty reasonable. Did you check on the 18s?
The, well, the, they wouldn't come equipped like we need them to come equipped, like the, the 2500, all these minus the police are getting their, they're not going to have a bid. They're going to have hydraulics or the, the equipment we need specifically for the job they need to be done.
I understand, but was it asked about the 2000, if there was a possibility to get the 2018s that they're advertising?
Well, they're probably not building them anymore, Terry.
No, but they're in inventory, that's why they're cheaper.
What's built is already built, and that's all that's available.
The discounts that we receive via municipal discount are not available on anything that's on their lot.
Oh, existing inventory.
Yeah, existing inventory. That's why we build everything. It makes it almost as cheap as, as a used vehicle or even a new vehicle they're trying to get rid of. I mean, $5,000, just, just because we're a municipality per vehicle is, is what they give us.
They did discount it $8,000.
Yeah, $8,000.
On page 65.
And this guarantees that we'll have the equipment that we need, rather than having to piecemeal possibly some of our equipment into them, which might cost us even more. So on the, on the Parks vehicle, Honeyman came in at $27,476, and Nemaha Valley came in at $32,000, so we recommend.
See, we were cut off there.
Okay, that's, that's, I did not notice that.
What page is that?
I'm sorry, what?
What page is that one on?
The bid for, from Nemaha Valley is 68, 66, I'm sorry, the 32,000?
Yeah. And then for Water and Sewer, Honeyman Ford came in at $36,242, and Nemaha Valley came in at $34,750 for their Dodge 3500. So that, we would recommend going with Dodge on the Water Sewer. And then below, you'll see that where these vehicles would be brought in, and we would, for the police, we'd send, I don't know which number it is, but their, one of their trucks down to the Water Sewer Department.
572.
572, okay. 572 will go to the Water Sewer Department, and one of theirs will, 528 would be replaced, and then the one we're buying here would replace 514, their 1996 Dodge. And then on the other ones, I think 543 is the Parks, which would be surplus, it's a 1994 Chevy, and then 521, 1997 Ford, F-350 would be replaced with that F-550.
You know, these warranties, the only thing we seek extended warranties on is on police vehicles?
The, I don't think we'll hit, I don't think we hit 100,000 miles in the first five years on some of these other vehicles.
On the other vehicles?
Yeah, the, the Parks stays in town, Street would stay in, it's a dump truck, stay in town, a smaller one, and Water Sewer might get, might get close, but the police department hits that 100,000 pretty easily.
So you want to buy the Water Sewer from Nemaha Valley, the Parks from Honeyman, the Street from Honeyman, and the Chevy from Nordis? I'm glad you're buying one from Nordis.
Yes, and I was happy he, he came in. We were kind of concerned because we got Ford in and Nemaha Valley, and, and the Dodge looked, looked to be a huge competitor, and usually Chevy doesn't come in at this. And usually Chevy doesn't come in at this well compared to the other ones, so we were, we were happy with that.
So, are you guys, you wanna make a motion to approve those four specific vehicles and then we'll talk about the surplus ones?
I move to approve those vehicles.
The four as recommended by Austin?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Don't do this all at once.
Are you gonna buy them all at once? I assume you're...
Yeah, we're gonna order, they take at least six weeks, right, Doc? At least six weeks.
They say six days, but you're like, "Ten."
Yeah. And depends on how busy they are, yes.
And then we gotta take the trucks and have a service bid and...
Yeah, and they'll go, yeah, they'll go right, except, well, even the police vehicle has, has to go somewhere to get it equipped.
Okay.
So, we, do we vote?
Nope, you just voted motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh? Okay. As far as surplus, they've changed, well, you're gonna move the one vehicle to Parks and Rec and then you want to...
No, to Water Sewer. We're gonna move the police vehicle to Water Sewer.
That's why Water Sewer's getting rid of two, the 96 and...
I guess we should have made that motion, I guess we said as you recommended, which would include the taking out of the funds as you recommended?
Yes, 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 yeah. Because that's how we, that's what we budgeted.
Everyone agreed to that? Okay. And then the surplus ones? Now, is one of these the ones that Kent Wardman redid?
The 1998 Dodge, yes.
1998 Dodge. When did he do that?
Two years ago.
Two years?
Yeah.
Do you remember how much he spent?
Uh, $5,000.
Six.
$6,000.
$5,000?
Uh-huh.
And what, we can't use that truck?
No, no, we're having to put more maintenance in than it's worth.
That specific truck?
That specific truck, yes. And we're hoping we get some money out of it, uh, back on one of the auction sites. I really hope so.
Well, that's painful that we did that two years ago on a truck we're gonna surplus. But I would entertain a motion to surplus those three trucks, 528?
Four trucks.
Five, okay, four trucks. Number 528, 521, 543, and 514?
You said surplus them?
Surplus them once we get the new vehicles in, yes.
Is that all right?
We're gonna have any use for them, huh?
Uh.
All three of them?
We're hoping, we're hoping to use the money we get from those vehicles to, to put back where this money comes out.
Did you make that motion?
I did.
I shall move.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh? All right.
Uh, I was recently approached, uh, by Chad Kramer of Kramer Oil about pining a portion of the property we own off 11th Road, uh, just south of his CJ East. Um, and he wanted to see how we felt about selling it, so I'm, that's my question right now, is how do we feel about selling it? Uh, we paid $150,000 with the sale that's, I'll say started because we paid it in increments over the years. Uh, $150,000. And Chad's looking to purchase it, he has plans to build on it and expand his business. There are two maps attached. Uh, one of the maps has a section, and in fact, this has changed since I put this together. Uh, that back half, the 2.33 acres is what he's really looking to purchase, or he would purchase the whole lot for a set price. So, everything we own right there, uh, he offered to buy.
Including south of their offices?
The whole L?
The whole L, yes. So, he, he wants to know if we are interested in selling it.
You know, I think there's, there's a lot of questions related to that. Number one, you know, from an economic development standpoint, we were just talking about industrial park. Do we wanna try to put a small industrial park in there? Or if he's gonna put industry in, is he building a building? And how much money is he, what, what effect is he gonna have on the tax rolls with that?
He is looking to branch out into a new sector.
Okay, so I think he needs to do like a cost benefit analysis because I think this is a perfect example of what we're supposed to look for on economic development. If he's gonna bring in a building and certain employees and kinda, if he can give us enough information to see what the cost benefit is to the city, then I think we have to analyze it from that standpoint. I mean, if he's, if he's investing in a new business and he's building a building, there's no reason for us to consider an industrial park there because he's already doing that himself. I just need to, I think we need to be really smart here about, um, if he's gonna bring in, you know, certain, uh, property taxes and if he's gonna bring in certain employees and then we need to make that really easy for him to expand his business. That's my personal take.
I, I don't know if there's enough room there to do much of an industrial park, just because of access.
Well, we were looking at five acres and it does have access off 11th Road, but I, but, but he's already doing that, actually.
Right, and it would, it would take most of our width of our, the bottom of the L to get to the back, you know?
The larger area.
It would start to, you know, you'd even it up just by acres.
I was just, you know, we keep thinking about looking for an industrial park and I was like, "Well, we actually have to ask those questions now."
I'm pretty glad they've invested a lot of money in the community, they've grown a lot. I mean, I, I'm glad they wanna expand. I mean, hopefully, they continue.
Yeah, so I would, I would rather have them buy the entire piece of property. There's no reason for us to have a small section. I would like them to kinda present to us what benefits has come into the city from this and we can give, that should affect the price we sell it at. I think we need to do what, find out what the comparable price would be for those areas, like comparable area, see what that price is. But I do think we need to, if he's really bringing in property tax dollars and possibly employees, I think we need to build that into what price we would sell it at.
There's a kind of a waterway between the old Walmart and this property and the dealership there. Is there a city right of way through that, that corridor?
No, it's just that lot.
Just the driveway, it's, it's a pure, I mean, it's, it's drawn on here, it's just the lot line?
It just looks exactly, yeah, just the lot line.
I didn't know if this was just drawn on or...
Nope, uh, just my red and green is what, is what I did.
So, at this point in time, I think we should recommend saying, "Yeah, we would consider selling it." The more information you give us, the more flexibility we'll have in the price and maybe have a finance and admin meeting once Austin gets more information and, and talk through it and then bring it to the council. What do you guys think?
Sounds good.
I think we need to be smart about this. Um, I'm glad he's expanding his business, so I, I think we should use this as an opportunity to be, have it be an economic development win for the community. All right?
And 150,000 was the amount that the city paid for the entire...
For the three, 3.6 acres.
But my, my takeaway from that is that's a sunk cost. If we paid a million dollars, it doesn't matter because it's a sunk cost. What we need to do is figure out how to encourage development and there's already water sewer street there for him to expand, so I think it could be a win-win for our community, so I think we need to price it wisely. Okay? So, we will, uh, in answer, you guys all in agreement that it would be a yes, we would sell it? And we'll have to evaluate what the price would be?
Yep.
Based on what he gives us? Okay. So, the answer is yes, and then how much will be turned on what he provides for us? And but, but you probably can find comparable areas recently in the comment, I think the property just south of there was purchased not too long ago, the acreage?
The valuation for this property is $81,200.
The valuation?
Yeah.
Okay, but I, also surrounding areas and what the property just to the south of there, also the property on Prairie Lane Road, I think, was turned not too long ago, so check those out as well. I don't think we should overprice it. I think we should encourage the development. So, like I said, this $150,000 is a sunk cost. All right. Does anyone answer your questions?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, received a quote from CES for Frank Marshall Drive Design. Uh, just wanted to check back, yeah, because you guys wanted to look at, um, I think the decision previously was yes, let's get these, uh, designs done so we can do it in the future, not this year. Uh, I just wanted to make sure when I got this bid, uh, that we still wanted to go for it.
This isn't a project this year. That was when we were doing five years.
That's correct.
So, that's a no.
No, okay. All right. Um, uh, let's see. Transportation alternative, um, they, I have some paperwork to fill out on this, but CES provided a, a quote for design for this project. Uh, it's $7,640. The KDOT provided their award letter with stipulations, uh, three stipulations. Uh, pavement matches on both sides, no brick in the middle of the pathway, and need to consider a raised crosswalk slash speed table to calm the traffic, improve, uh, improve safety. I did discuss with KDOT what they meant by consider and their representative told me that unless it was going to cause drainage issues or something other, uh, some other maintenance issue, that we should make it raised. I mean, it's already a hump right now.
I think that's a big mistake.
But it's a gradual hump. It's not, you know, like here first hump.
And I think that the word that they use, the other one says match, include, and then consider.
Right.
And consider doesn't mean, mean we have to do it. Think about that, um, how slick the brick is and if you put a raised platform on there on Broadway, on, on the icy streets we have right now, would have been horrible. The other thing is that we never, ever discussed a raised platform or speed control. We were trying to reduce the hump to make it more accessible. The other thing is that we, um, I think it would be a trip hazard when we have these special events. You know, we have, like, the car show has, when we have those blocked off, I think people will trip over it.
It shouldn't be raised that much.
It'll be a, it'll be a ramp, like, it'll be a gra, it'll be a gradual, it won't be because the, because you're gonna match the existing and right, I mean...
The existing is down below.
It's kind of down below, yes.
And so, it's gonna be significantly less. But the raised platforms in, uh, in, in Manhattan are only around the shopping center between the parking and the shopping center. That's totally different than our downtown area. And when you go to Beatrice and the trail crosses Highway 77, you don't have a raised platform.
I know, and it's dangerous as crap. I about got hit there myself.
And when you go on Saltillo Road, when you, in Lincoln, when the trail crosses, it's not a raised platform.
And I know two people who've been killed on that road.
That's, they call it the most dangerous road in Nebraska.
But, no, but I'm, but the, the volume that we're gonna have compared to Saltillo Road and Highway 77 is very low.
I hope so, yeah.
Well, and the speed limit's a lot lower than those areas, too.
I wouldn't think we'd need a speed bump on Main Street.
So, I think what we wanna do is go back to what we originally presented. We have the nice smooth brick and we can put a concrete, which they require, and to match the pavement on both sides and go back to our original plan as we presented.
So, what, what do you want me to tell that KDOT representative who gave me the explanation that I just told you?
That we, that we considered it and that's not what we prefer.
I, I think we shouldn't pick this fight with KDOT.
The thing, when we get it done, do they have to look over the, uh, once CES gets...
We have to submit the plans.
Austin, when you first presented this, you said they wanted, they wanted. That was not the word they used.
Which is why I double-checked. Well, I, I, I sat on the phone with him, he said exactly this. I can't, I'm not lying to you here. I'd wanna know what you want me to tell him.
Well, it says consider, so we've considered it and it's not the best thing for our Broadway Street.
Okay.
Is that the consensus or, I mean, I, I wanted to get it, I think we should get a consensus on that. That's just my opinion. I mean...
Okay, I just laid out all the reasons why not to.
Well, I think we should because I don't think we should, it's what obviously KDOT prefers. I don't think it's a hazard. I think it would look good. I think it would be good for safety. Um, I don't think it's any reason why we shouldn't do it their way. I think KDOT might be right. Furthermore, it's what they want.
It's not what they want. They said to consider.
Well, you know, if I tell my daughter to consider cleaning up her attitude, it's because I want her to do that.
Well...
Just saying. It's obviously what they want.
So, they said match and they said include were the first two requirements?
The curvings are already there, so we're not gonna pull the curb and the wheels and all that out to redo this project. So, basically, it's gonna stay at the elevation it is. The only thing it's gonna change is the taper from the bulkheads on each side to that sidewalk in the middle.
Right, and that, well, the sidewalk does kinda dip into the asphalt, so it's not as high as, as that hump is gonna be. Because they want you to match.
Yeah.
They want you to...
It'll actually be lower than it is now at the, you know, the climax, the apex, I think, yeah.
The current hump that's right there, we're talking about either keeping it or removing it?
No, we're taking that, taking that out and they're gonna match the, the existing wheels to make the pathway.
The wheel's probably, I don't know, maybe an inch and a half or something. There's an asphalt.
Into the asphalt, into the asphalt.
Yeah, because they're here and the hump goes this way, so it's gotta come down in order to match the wheels.
Right.
So, we're gonna bring it down? The hump is coming down?
Yes, a little bit.
It's not a raised platform, then?
It depends on how much, you got, it, it's an optical illusion. We gotta actually see what, because if we can't, if, if, if the wheel comes down to the level of what the brick is currently on the rest of the street, then I think they'd probably go with us on, on the flat surface because we're not gonna, they're not gonna pay to change the wheels. So, they want you to match it. They want you to match it.
Those were terribly expensive.
Right, so, it's, I, I just, I'd see where...
This was the, this is what we had, we presented, and it moved up a little bit and gradually down. It's not a raised platform. It's a gradual up and a gradual down. Is that what you're talking about?
I think it, I, I think we have a terminology difference, but, I mean, raised platform, that is a raised platform.
That is.
It's just not raised, raised. I mean, I...
This I'm okay with. This is what we expected.
It'll be higher than the rest of the street.
Yeah, because the wheels are higher than the rest of the street.
Right, yeah, 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 just in the center.
Because you need to grade.
Right, to drain and...
Yeah, we're not talking about raising anything else.
No, it's gonna be like this.
Yeah, because they're gonna make a speed bump. They wanna slow traffic, so they're...
No, we're not making a speed bump to slow traffic.
What, what is, isn't that what they said though?
Which is what you said in the newspaper.
They mainly just...
Is that we were gonna, it was just slow traffic.
It's calm traffic, yeah, but it's...
Well, if you see something coming, you tend to slow down.
It's gonna, it's gonna look higher than everything else, so you're gonna be, just like a narrow road. You're gonna slow down for the narrow road and, and that little transition. That's, that's a traffic calming. It's not, it's not a, we're not raising everything up. It's...
It won't be as much of a lip as a lay down curb.
Right.
It'll be less than that much of a raise. raise.
Yeah, it's not gonna...
As long as it stays according to this.
Well, I believe that is basically the same thing, is it not?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, it's gonna be raised. It's gonna be a raised platform like that.
Okay.
Because it's raised.
This is what we presented.
Right, because it's high, it's higher than the rest of the street, so it's gotta raised anyways.
Yeah, if you stand on the wagon wheel, you can, on the brick, you can see it kinda dips in both directions.
Yeah. No, we're not looking at putting a, a speed, what you think is a speed bump.
You would have to be going pretty fast to really catch air or something. Hopefully no one's going that fast.
So it's a smooth up and a smooth down?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's an elevation like this?
It'll make you wanna slow down, yes.
Okay.
So, uh, so we're...
So just to make sure, when you present it, we want it built like that?
Okay.
With CES?
Right.
And they're gonna give us how much money?
Ninety-two thousand, something.
Ninety-two thousand, yeah.
Just for that crossing there.
Yes, yep.
We have to pay the engineering. The engineering is on...
Design, engineering by ourselves, and then the match, the 20% match.
So on page 75, CES is giving the preliminary and construction documents for $7,640.
Yep.
Those are all ours.
Yep.
And then, and then, let's see, and then we're gonna also have to pay, let's see our one, up to 12,000, no, that is, no, that is a construction. So up to 12,000 for the preliminary engineering costs. Is that true?
No, that's what that is. They estimated this and then they came in into that.
This is construction?
So the 12,000 was what they estimated previous to putting this out.
So this is the 7,640?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's our out-of-pocket and then we share 90% on the other costs.
They pay, they pay 80%, we pay 20.
Eighty, 20?
Yep.
Eighty, 20, up to 91,626.
Right.
Okay. So I guess first we have to say if we're gonna approve this grant, because you need to let them know.
Right.
So, um, so the grant was sent to us showing that we'll be awarded 91,626 for that project. Is there a motion to approve that grant?
Move to approve the transportation alternative grant.
For 91,626?
91,626.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 7-0. And then the next step is we have to approve CES. You know, we, I think it was in the minutes, but at the last street committee meeting, we discussed using CES for this project. Remember we, Kevin, you were, you were there?
Yeah, and Bobby.
And Bobby, she's not here. So now I'm looking for another person to shake their head. So we agreed that, we recommended the CES. Did we vote on that last time?
Uh, you asked me to bring back this figure and talk about it in the street committee.
Yeah, so are you guys all okay with CES going to them for this? Okay, so you wanna go ahead and approve?
That's for doing just one part of that.
The design, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not, yeah, the design phase?
Yep.
And preliminary engineering?
That's the same thing.
Design and preliminary?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that sending it out to get it approved for the grant? Is that what this is?
No, this, I have paperwork to put together. You guys approve the grant. This is just the portion we pay for on our own.
And then we'll bid it yet?
The project itself, yes, yes.
And we're just approving to accept the grant and to do the engineering on it?
The design, engineering, yep.
Then they will go out for a bid on it, correct?
On the, um, on the project.
KDOT?
Yeah, KDOT should, yeah.
Okay, they'll do the bid?
The bid, yep.
Oh, KDOT has the bid.
Okay.
I'm fairly certain.
So we've already accepted the grant, so we're accepting the estimate, or not the estimate, the lump sum of 7,640 with CES to the, do the preliminary engineering related to that project? It's on page 75, 76, and 77?
Move to approve CES for the transportation alternative engineering on the 7th Street intersection improvement.
For 7,640?
7,640.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 7-0, all right.
On which button?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yeah, I believe we have it listed on the master project list coming out of sales tax?
Right, yep, right, yep.
Okay. It is listed on there, isn't it?
Yes, because I put face two on it last time, yeah.
Okay.
All right, next one is my conference request list. I'm requesting the same conferences that I was approved for last year. I appreciate your consideration and approval of these conferences. These conferences help me keep up to date and continue learning about my job. I'm still early in my career and have a lot to keep learning. Also on this list are two conferences that Cindy will be attending. These will help her in continuing to learn about the city clerk's position and get her started on being a certified municipal clerk. If you have any questions, I didn't get any questions about my conferences or anything like that before this, but I look for your approval and I put estimates on how much each one of these would cost.
The CCMFOA conference, it's only a couple of weeks out. It's not a problem.
Right.
Registers, okay.
She's already...
I did register.
Okay, well, I was thinking, that's getting pretty close to...
It's just in Manhattan, so it's only, it'll only be a one-night stay, so the hotel won't be that much.
Were these the only ones you wanted to go to, Cindy?
I think there is a one-day one that's gonna, from the league, that's for basic city clerk things.
Yeah, I looked at that. It says MTI Clerk Fundamentals on April 5th in Garnet.
Right, I didn't realize Garnet was so far, but I can still drive that in one day and come back, so, I mean, I don't mind doing that. I will see about trying to get to that just because I think it's maybe good to have the leagues take as well as the CCMFOA.
Well, the league's training is really good.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, they is. And I meet a lot of people in the league maybe I would want to talk to again.
Yeah, no, but the networking aspect is obviously huge. And I, you know, I will say these also are kind of spread out, all these, which is kinda nice, so they're not butting up against each other.
We're not close to each other, so, and I won't leave the people with the manager. I don't quite do that.
So you wanna add the MTI conference on April 5th?
I'll see if that's still open.
The Nashville one, is that a flying or driving trip?
Driving trip, yeah. It, with all the wait, like, it takes two and a half hours to get to the airport. It'd take four and a half hours to fly there, five and a half to get back.
It's not that far to go to St. Louis and down.
Exactly, so that saves a ton of money on flying.
Is the Water and Sewer Conference, is somebody from Water Sewer going on that?
Typically, they, some of them, at least one of them goes to get certified in one of their areas.
So we, we have Kent and Del, Kent certified in both.
Right.
We have Delmar certified in water and Tony certified in sewer or reverse?
Uh...
Delmar has got water and some sewer. Yeah, he's got both. Kevin's got some, too, and I'm not sure what he's got.
Yeah, yeah.
And Hammond's got some stuff, too.
Each one of them, except for PJ, have some sort of certification.
Yeah, and I know Hammond does, too.
Yeah, water or sewer.
And some of them have part of both.
So are you sending one of them for, any of those for certification?
Yeah, to get recertified, so, so to keep up on their hours. They have to get five hours a year or...
Is it every two years they have to have, so they have to figure out to make sure they either get it all in one year or get part each year?
Yeah.
There's a couple of different schools they can go to, but this provides a lot of it.
Well, I know when we first talked about these, they were gonna do a lunch and learn. Did you do a lunch and learn on this?
I did. I, the one I did, I didn't do a lunch and learn. I did, I think, I followed what you were doing as far as, I sent out a huge document on my trip to Baltimore.
For the Water Sewer?
I had, to be honest, I had the Water Sewer all ready to go and it just, I didn't have it formatted and everything just came down on everything else and...
Did you communicate what you learned to the Water Sewer Department?
Yes, yeah, and we, they...
I mean, that's the most important lunch and learn, in my opinion.
Right, yes. We definitely pass along the information. We sit down and talk about it, yes. I definitely wanna make sure they're up to date as well.
Okay.
Can we just approve the first two for now and then we can discuss the other two later?
Is that your motion?
I'm just asking.
I, well, no, because the ICMA is in my contract, so that one's already approved. And the, I'd prefer to know where I'm going. That way I can make sure we have everything in line. It helps with these guys in here especially to know where everything's at and it just, it makes it beneficial for everybody if we all know what's on the table. And this has been pared down over the years. I took off a conference last year at your guys' request, and this actually works out. They are pretty spread out. One next month, the one the month after that, and that one's one of my, basically it's free. That's a payment for one of the sessions. They require a payment for it, but it's basically a free conference in Lawrence, other than hotel stay. And then KACM, the annual conference is all the way at the end of the year. So it's, it's pretty well spread out and it works for everybody.
Well, for the future, that ICMA annual conference, is that, I mean, you would want to go to it every year?
I'm taking next year off because it's in Canada. It's one of the most beneficial conferences I've ever, I ever go to. I put pages and pages together. I don't know if you guys read what I put in there, and I don't know what you guys got out of it, but I get a lot out of that conference. That's why I hinge on that. So, I mean, these are all, I've been told I need to keep learning and these really help. They are all across the spectrum of things. For instance, the spring conference is an academic one. It's at KU. They use their, their professors and all their contacts to get that one together, whereas the KACM conference in Garden City is a practical, where you actually get to see everything in operation. So everything offers something different for me. It's not the same conference over and over and over.
I move to approve the administrator and city clerk conferences with the possible addition of the...
MTI training?
MTI training with the league.
Second.
Is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-1, all right.
I think that is all I have for now.
All right.
Oh, I do, one question. We had set up that mock thing for the water shop. I don't know if you all got to see it on that land that we own over there. I haven't got any comments back from you guys. I don't know what you guys think about that. I know we need to talk about trail and stuff like that, but initially, without getting any feedback from the trail, what did you guys think about the placement of that shop?
The cones represent a fence or a wall?
That represents the building.
That represents the building. That's what scares me a little bit.
Oh, actually, I thought it, I mean, how tall is the sidewall?
The, we haven't figured, we haven't figured that out.
It's gonna have to be tall enough to get the sewer truck in it.
Oh, yeah, very tall.
Yeah, the sewer truck, yeah.
And probably the roof pitched east-west, not north-south?
We'd have to get some design layouts on consideration.
I was standing over there here last week, kind of trying to visualize what it would look like.
We haven't gotten the vertical part down.
It feels far away when you look at cones, and then I went, well, if it's really tall, then it might look kinda close.
We haven't gotten the vertical portion down. We've gotten somewhat the layout where vehicles could sit and how vehicles get in there and where the offices are and all that stuff.
I thought we were gonna, you were gonna enter off Carolina, but the drawing showed entering off 7th Street.
The, the parking for the guys and where they enter would be off, oh, you mean Calhoun? Calhoun, right.
Is that Calhoun, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Calhoun. That's where they would go into the shop, because that's where they would be able to park their vehicles.
But all their four big garage doors are gonna be?
Would be off into 7th Street.
Wait, are you guys okay with all those garage doors off 7th Street?
I'm not in love with it. Would there, would it be concrete apron? I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Would be a concrete apron, yes, yeah, to get into the shop, yes.
I think if the whole area was improved as maybe optimally shown with some of these drawings and things, it wouldn't be bad, but out of the nowhere, yeah, it doesn't sound super great.
Okay.
It's kinda, it's awful big, I mean, every inch of the lot is being, gonna be a building.
Calhoun getting improved would be really nice, so as far as that tie-in and things. And I'm talking to some of the trail...
But Calhoun isn't even part of our TA project.
No, no, but I mean, but, you know, as far as things go, it would, it's kind of a rough area that hasn't seen improvement or love for a long time, just kinda came back into our fold, but I talked to some trail people and they didn't seem overly concerned about it.
Didn't, did they see the cones?
Yeah, I think that, and the thing that sold me that I kind of mentioned to people too, is that if this is well-lit, which it would be where the drive-up doors are and things, it'd actually help with some security issues that have been down there, because it's such a dark kinda area. I mean, there's wildlife.
Open space.
And wild children running wild.
Pre-ranged.
Yes.
We don't want, we don't want wild children.
Feral, feral kids here.
Okay, is that all?
Yeah, yeah, we just wanted some feedback.
We could discuss it at the workshop, maybe.
Okay.
When do you foresee a workshop?
Um, I...
In April or March?
Uh, well, we got, is April okay?
The first shot at the budget?
Yeah.
Talking about capital improvements?
Yep.
You guys okay with April, waiting for April?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have to do April, May then, back-to-back months, April, May. Are you all right with that?
I think that's what we did last year.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, we'll move along to standing committee reports. First, I wanna say on the street, I think they did a great job with the snow, so thank you, crew. And Austin, you recognized about the increase in the KDOT monies for connecting links. They'll give us about $5,500 a year, which won't offset the cost of the, what is to do clink every seven years, but $5,500 times seven, $37.50 is more than, without $37.50, so it'll help offset those costs. You mentioned that you looked at the Carolina wall. Were they talking about the Heritage Trust Fund for that?
The...
When they said funding, because it was a WPA project?
They, I've never seen Heritage Trust Fund do something like that. They didn't tell me what kind of funding. He said his sister, who works in his office, had some contacts and she would get something to me.
Yeah, I think it's a, it was a WPA project, so, yeah.
But it's not a historic site. We would have to get that.
We could make it an historic site.
Well, that's the first thing you have to do, is go and ask for it.
Then we wouldn't, I don't know if we would have the leeway that this contractor would need to...
Fix it?
Fix it, yeah. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but it just...
All right, well, see what there is there.
Yep.
And then I had a couple of people stop me about the UTVs, saying, you understand that UTVs are taxed at 30%. And so I went and talked to the appraiser's office and sure enough, you know, boats are taxed at 5%, but UTVs are taxed at 30 and it's a state statute. So I, and I said, well, have they ever, I said, how come it's so high? And they said, well, nobody's ever, you know, really pressed to make it less. So basically, the tax is gonna be high at the appraiser's office on those vehicles, so I'm just letting everybody know about that. And second, I mean, you need to write your congressman and senators and ask them to bring it up as a House bill to change it. And she said that boats used to be 30% and they reduced it to 5. So it's really about people writing their senators and congressmen and say, can we, you know, what's your justification? I don't think there's any specific justification.
I think that what I've heard for justification is mostly that they aren't tagged or things like regular vehicles, and since they use the public right-of-way, this is their way of recouping that expense, since the state's not getting any kind of registration or tag fees or anything off of it.
Well, we don't get tag fees on boats either.
No, but I mean, but they aren't using the roads. That's the way I understand it. Through Pratt or wherever, yeah.
So anyway, we can write our congressman and ask them to reduce it.
Well, there's a lot of things we can write our congressman about.
Okay, I'm just saying, so I just wanted to throw that out. Anybody else have streets?
Yeah, they did a great job, sorry.
No.
They did a great job cleaning streets. Did they have some equipment problems, maybe, overnight? It seemed like, I'm surprised they didn't have more of the piles along the highway cleaned up this morning than they did, as was mentioned to me.
He said it was one of the hardest snows they've had.
Is that washed?
It was a nightmare with the slush and the rain. He said it was a nightmare.
At the bottom, it was slushy, icy, and grossed up, yeah, okay.
They'll be up tonight.
I was just curious. They did great. I'm not complaining at all. I just was curious.
I know, they had all those piles, they had some piles all cleaned up on the highway.
Yep, they did that last night.
Because, yeah, even if it doesn't get above freezing, the highway should heat up enough to get most of it cleared, so.
Well, next year, I think we need to put notices in the paper early in the newsletter and let people know about moving their vehicles.
We'll do that next.
Of the routes. And then also, what is it, eight hours after the snow stops, people should have their sidewalks shoveled?
It's 12 to 24.
12 to 24.
12 to 24 hours?
Absolutely, yeah. And we have sent a couple of letters to businesses that are empty.
Well, there are many of the residents that have not shoveled and, and I'm thinking of my son who walks and the other postal people who walk 17 miles and this kinda stuff.
So I'm glad they're...
17 miles a day.
Yeah.
So they let some letters out only for businesses and not for residents?
Well, where we get complaints, if we've got a complaint, we'll send a, we'll send a...
And the businesses probably get more foot traffic near them, so...
Exactly, because they're downtown.
It's more likely to have a complaint.
No, not just to businesses. It's, we get a complaint, that's how we, we do do it. So if there are some that you know that are in the way, that by, you know, that's being used a lot, let us know.
Yeah, if somebody needs us to...
Because there's, you know, be schoolchildren, too, that...
Right, and all of those, usually we'll get those complaints right away and we'll we'll make some phone calls to see if we can get it.
Did you have a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've, I've been approached by three different people. I want, I want to get two questions answered pertaining to the street department.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, it's about the street. It's about Seventh Street. Last year in July and August, our street committee worked on plans with Tony Dever to engineer a design for the Seventh Street corridor for the city to apply for a TA grant. The council discussed this at meetings on July the twenty-third and August thirteenth. Then on August the twenty-seventh, the council unanimously passed a resolution of support for the Broadway Street and railbed corridor improvements project in Marysville. This was a unanimous decision by the council. Then, in the weekly council highlights on February the eighth, two thousand nineteen, it states, "Location for new water shop. We have been working on, on the logistics or possibly using the property of Seventh and Calhoun for the location of a new water shop." On February the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, the city administrator sent out an email stating, "The water crew has laid out where the new water shop could go at Seventh and Calhoun." Obviously, someone decided to present plans for a new water shop to be located in the Seventh Street corridor. Using the street corridor has never been discussed by the council in open session. The public would have no way of knowing about these plans for a large building to be erected in the Seventh Street corridor instead of us following through with the street, bike trail, and parking as planned in our TA grant resolution. Now, my two questions are that I was asked, and I'm concerned about, is number one, who had the authority to override the city resolution of support for the TA grant project without a council vote?
Since no despending decision was ever made, we're not building, no council decision has been made. We just looked at it. There's no decision.
All right.
So, nothing's been overridden.
That's good, good enough for my answer. But my second question is, when did this get decided?
We talked about the location last meeting, but you weren't here, Terry.
No, I watched the meeting. That wasn't what we talked about. It wasn't talked about at the last meeting. I watched the whole meeting.
We talked about putting cones out, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked about improving Calhoun Street being part of a, an overall project to improve that area as well.
There is no record in the minutes or anything about talking about this anyplace.
Did I miss something?
That's not fair to the public. This decision wasn't made in the council.
No, no decision has been made.
No decision's been made. Measured it out.
One, wait, one, uh, one conversation at a time, please?
Technically, no decision has been made.
I have-
The only thing that's in the minutes on page five is Mayor Grun questioned the aesthetics of placing a building at Seventh and Calhoun, and CA St. John reported the building would fit in the space. CM Fry reported-
Where was this, where was this taking place? In the mi- minutes?
Yes, in your minutes.
Of which meeting?
The last meeting.
From the last meeting.
The one that you missed, Terry.
Okay, this all happened before that meeting?
I don't have the minutes from the previous meeting.
I don't.
You do? Are they referenced? Is there any reference to it?
I don't. I don't see anything. This would have been-
Wait, what meeting was, what date was that on?
This is the last meeting.
What date, what date was that?
The twenty-
It had to be the meeting-
What, what day did my email come out?
This was in February the eighth, was when you, you present, you told people about this.
Okay. So, what decision are you having, there's no actual vote on building a building there?
It doesn't matter about the vote. It's a matter about the public being notified about this happening.
But nothing's happened?
Nothing's happening. Discussing it is them being notified that we're discussing it. Discussing that we're discussing. No decisions have been made.
Where did the idea materialize at? That's the question I was asked.
Look, I mean, there's several sites that we're interested or looking at to put a street shop. Some of them are on properties the city owns. Others are properties that we would have to buy from somebody.
Right.
And then we get into the, we can't discuss openly the ones that we might have to purchase.
Right.
And I think the thinking was that we need to look at all the sites, figure out which ones even are viable or not, and have an idea of what infrastructure we would need to put into these sites. We have a comparison cost-wise of what the different sites are gonna cost us.
And I think the mayor mentioned maybe several minutes, meetings ago of that we own, already own that property.
Yeah, I, I know-
I remember that.
That site was discussed.
I don't remember how long ago it was.
I don't remember any place in open session where it was suggested that we would do it on Seventh and Calhoun. If you can show me that, it's fine.
We discussed it in open, I believe Todd-
I'm sure I discussed it.
I know, it was in an open meeting.
I don't remember which meeting.
It's been a few meetings back.
Yeah.
It was one of them where we were talking about-
January.
Yeah, it's been a while back.
And then plus the last meeting we discussed it.
Yeah, it's been discussed. I mean, I don't remember if we ever discussed actually, you know, when it got discussed, cone in and out. But I know we've discussed that site before. It's, is one of them.
Well, we've got all the tapes to watch and it, it isn't on any of the tapes.
I, I'm sure that Todd brought that up in one of the meetings. I couldn't tell you which one, but I remember it being brought up. It's been brought up a few times, that site.
Well, the only place I can figure out that it might have been talked about was in a closed session when I was excluded. That's the only place it could have been talked about.
You recused yourself from that meeting, I believe.
Recusal and exclusion are not the same thing.
That's not the same thing. We, yeah. You recused yourself from that meeting.
Just want the answer, that's all.
I'm telling you, the answer is, best I remember it is that we've looked at a few sites and, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm, I'm not a big fan of that location, but it was brought up and I don't have a problem with looking into it and seeing if it will fit or not.
If it saves the city money, I'm all for it too. What I'm not for is that it wasn't done in public meeting to make this decision.
It didn't have to be-
But no decision's been made. No, Terry, we, we don't, nobody made a decision.
No, wait, one at a time, please.
That's the thing, is no decision's been made. That we're, we're discussing it. That's not, a discussion is not a decision.
I understand that.
So, I mean, that's, we are in the public discussing it. So, before any decision, because we want the public to be involved if there is a decision to be made, but we have not made a decision.
We advertised a resolution of support that we were gonna do this for the trail and the, and the depot, and it was gonna be for parking. Nobody ever said anything about doing something different with it.
Well, we're, we also-
And before that, just tomorrow-
Go ahead, yes.
Before that, we hadn't even got, I don't believe we hadn't even got the decision back that the TA grant wasn't gonna help on the Seventh Street. You, the decision was made for this idea to put it there was done before we even knew we were rejected on the north end of the TA grant.
Because we could, we didn't decide to take the TA grant yet. It's only a discussion too. We decided to apply for it, but we didn't decide to take it. Until a final decision's made, we have ultimate right to change our minds and do something different because we haven't made a contractual decision.
Okay.
In the same way, we decided to build a fire station on the property next to Kramer Oil, but now we're talking about possibly selling it for something else. Cause we didn't decide to build one, we supported the idea of building one. To me, that's the distinction. I don't know if anybody else still did.
In other words, there was never talk about in open discuss, in an open session.
We are talking about-
At one time, I did bring up, and it wasn't this last meeting that I passed this around?
Yes.
Parking and everything on it?
This parking.
Nothing about a new building going there?
Yeah, it's in the-
You mentioned it.
Well, when, when, when I passed this out, I, I pointed out that this is what the TA, what they-
At which meeting, Carl?
Last meeting.
Last meeting.
I, it's when I passed-
I wasn't at that meeting.
So, when I passed this out at the last meeting, I said, you know, the, when they were talking about the water and sewer building, I said, you're changing what we, um, initially designed, and no one had a problem with that. Um, at the last meeting, we would have known that we did not have the TA grant for that. Because this was dated January thirtieth, so, and we discussed the TA grant last meeting. So, on February eleventh, we knew we didn't have it. So, but, I mean, so, going back to this, uh, so we know we don't have the TA grant for this. Um, we haven't discussed, we haven't made a decision on putting the building there, and we haven't, um-
Um, I watched the meeting last night when, uh, Mark Hoffman was talking and he told the whole council that they were really excited about July, maybe having the thing done, and that the depot maybe being a trailhead and parking and everything. I watched, I didn't see anybody telling, well, there's gonna be a little short of parking place because we're considering putting the building where you think there's gonna be some parking. Nobody told me.
We might not have mentioned it.
All of the discussion-
No, you didn't.
We had talked about on Hedrick's and Calhoun and Carolina and Alston, was where we were talking about parking, not on the rock, not on the old right-of-way, but rather on all the surface streets in the area. Furthermore, I visited with Mark Hoffman multiple times about this, and the trail group is aware of us discussing the water shop.
And there is lots of parking in that area. Lots of parking now.
Just Hedrick's alone probably has fifty spots. I mean, it's a lot, more than you'd think. And it's lined out, it is painted.
Oh, Hedrick's.
I hope they're satisfied with your answer. That's all I had to say about it.
Okay. All right.
I got one thing else on street.
Yes?
I had some of the, I guess you wanna call them apartment owners over here on the highway side, ask me where the, they would need to park on a, for snow removal.
Well, would they, would they have to park at Heverin parking lot? I'm just throwing that out.
I don't know. That's why I said-
Is Heverin, do we clear?
The ones that park here on the highway and on Ninth Street and on Broadway around the front. You know, we declare an emergency snow, like we are, and we're trying to get it cleaned up. You know, the crews just go in and out and do the best they can. They asked me where the city would like them to park.
This isn't the best answer, but a primary route that's closest to them would be the next best, if they get it off, off our highways, if they get off our highways, or-
So, we can get them clean?
Get them clean, get them off the emergency routes.
And go from emergencies to a primary route? I guess that's the answer?
It's not, it's, that's the next best, if they're trying to close, park as close to their property or wherever they live as possible.
I guess, you know, they could park over here at this, behind the church.
Of course, every time they do that, when our guys come to try to clean those parking lots, then.
Yeah.
I mean, just like the-
I'm just saying on an overnight thing.
Sure, right.
I mean, if you're trying to clear them for the overnight.
Yeah, for the overnight is what they were concerned about.
Cause they clear Eighth and Ninth.
Right.
That's tough.
Yeah. And the highway.
And the highway and Broadway.
Yeah. Cutout, they've talked about that up against the Kestner Museum, you know, where the angle parking is?
Mm-hmm.
And, and one of the people who live along there asked, can I park there? And we told them yes.
Yeah.
Because that is off-street parking. That is not, our guys do clean it, but they don't have to. You know where I'm talking about? That, that's along Tenth Street.
Yeah.
On the west side.
That'd get them off the street.
That gets them off the street, on the highway coming through, and that's off-street parking.
That's two blocks up.
Well, it's one block from several of those who are right there on that Tenth Street corner.
You're talking right on, on the west side of Highway seventy-seven?
Yes.
Because that's off-street, that's cut out.
That angle, that angle is fine to park on?
Cause technically, we're not, we don't, we shouldn't, but they do. But yeah, technically, no.
Well, that would be close for the people between Eighth and Ninth.
And they have asked. And those are the ones that ask.
That'd get them off the routes.
That gets them off the routes.
Yes.
And they did ask and we told them yes.
But they all entered their apartments on the backside, on the center?
On the backside here on Seventy-seven.
Well-
Some of them on Broadway.
Couple of them entered from the front.
Yeah. That's the closest, that's the closest spot they could probably get. That's off of any-
But it is kinda bad for the people who live around Eighth and Broadway.
Well, Eighth and Broadway, I'd have them park over here.
Yeah, which would probably be smarter in this one. And that's two blocks for them that way.
Madam Mayor, why can't they park down in the swimming pool parking lot?
Well, they could, but that's two blocks.
That's, that's much farther away.
I'm just saying, you know, we, you know, we make all these routes and then we say, we don't, we need to figure out how to accommodate these people.
Some of them are not younger folks too, and some have little children or trying to carry things. I mean, that's, it's a lot of-
They have groceries too.
Of course, it's, we're asking one day, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not permanent.
Right.
So, like I said, I was just asked, I said-
So, now you know that-
I just bring it here and find out.
Well, it's good to know that west side angle parking by the, by the museum, they can park, and then over here would be the next, second best.
I think some people too park, um, east of the movie theater on Ninth Street North.
Oh, sure.
I've seen some people park there who park normally along the highway.
Yeah, that's true. I never thought of that.
I thought, I thought Ninth was a primary, that Ninth is a primary route all the way through town.
It is, but I noticed that some of them will shuffle it.
But there is parking there, is there not?
There is, but it's not as wide a street as highway.
One pickup lot's not moved and it's not clear up to the, clear up to the curb.
It sticks out quite a bit.
Yeah.
Been there three snows.
All right, let's move on. Water, wastewater, Parks Rack, Cemetery Airport, Police Fire. I want to say thank you to the fire department for putting the lines in for the washing, new washing machine for the fire department. Did someone, did I miss somebody? Did you have something else?
Cemetery Airport, did you find anything what happened with that one hangar? You know, we were missing a hangar and you were gonna check on that?
It's, it's the one that was where, where the Landau parking lot, when it was expanded. I don't know why it's still listed, but it's, that is the one that was demoed.
They just have, always had the number there.
It's part of the parking lot?
It's, it's where the parking lot is now.
Is there a door's gonna be put on that one hangar? Is that Landau's hangar?
Yeah, the one on the furthest southwest corner.
Yeah. I didn't know who owned it, but there's a steel builder's doors and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there was, missing one door, now it's missing both.
Yeah, the whole side's gone.
Yeah, it looks like it'll flow down in a stiff breeze.
I don't know what the- On that hangar, that specific hangar?
Southwest corner, I can remember the number. It's the one nearest the Landau parking lot in the back row.
Did you have something to?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, first thing is, uh, city gave me the brochure that's coming to be used for the ETVs, or, no, sorry, the UTVs and stuff starting April one. And on our checklist and stuff, we're looking at tail lamps. It's plural. Now, I know that, uh, there's manufacturers that have two turn signals, but they have one, they stop them in the back. It's not two, just one. Is that gonna be acceptable to you?
So, you need, we need to put the S in brackets?
Well, they're already made. We'll just write, see if there's a space for notes over here. We can just write, there is an operational braking line.
Just one, yeah, if you put just one in there, then we know.
Cause it's usually like, I forget the brand it is. It's right in the middle and it's about this big.
Okay.
But the turn signals are down.
Well, we haven't seen that. The council hasn't seen that little brochure that you have.
This is what we have made. Just simple, city have these made. This, we do our inspections on.
Oh, I meant that, that other document.
We haven't seen a board, that either.
This is why, we're having a meeting with all, all the officers, since we have to do the inspections. Um, because the reason I'm asking something that's simple is because of the seat belts. ATV, or the UTVs, I understand, but your micro utility trucks, a lot of them pre-manufactured a long time ago, only have lap belts. They weren't manufactured with crossovers, just like antique cars. Are you gonna accept those, or are they gonna have to drill holes in their vehicles and try to bolt in a crossover belt?
So, you're saying if it's factory-made that way?
Yeah, it's like the state of Kansas uses certain vehicles prior to, what, seventy-one Yeah, it's like the state of Kansas uses certain vehicles prior to, what, '71 or something, whatever it was, only came with lap belts. They don't have crossover belts. Are we gonna consider the same thing with these microutility trucks?
Yeah, I think two points, fine, yeah, it doesn't have to be an aftermarket three-point harness installed.
That works fine for me, if that's the way it's on here, I just wanna make sure the, we're good with that, and I don't send something over here to City Hall for it.
So you created this, or you found a sample from somewhere?
I created it, I took it straight off your ordinance, what you people said you had to have, and you said, "Three-point harness," not just lap belts.
And I understand that, the UTVs, like Terry, they can come out and they're built into, but the price, microutility trucks, the older ones that won't have them. Personally, I wouldn't write it, a UTV got one, too easy to take flight.
That's why we made a thing for notes, so they had a place to drop.
I'm curious, you talk about that lap belt instead of the, uh, what about a factory vehicle that doesn't have turn signals? We always have a hand signal that we could use.
I would agree with you on that, that kinda surprised me when I saw that voted on, because even motorcycles, you can use hand signals, or your car, you can use hand signals if you want.
I thought that was excessive to put that in there.
You're, what you're doing, you're taking a brand-new vehicle, and you're causing somebody to drill holes in a brand-new vehicle to just, and rewire something that didn't come with it.
There's magnetic turn signals, and there's a plan for turn signals.
I give you spin on a brand-new UTV that you're not gonna wanna...
But here's the thing, my thought on that is that I know of at least two accidents that happened because people don't know what a hand signal is. They don't, I mean, yes, they teach a driver's ed, but go quiz, 18-year-olds or 30-year-olds, you're probably not gonna get a lot that even know what it means, whereas everybody knows what a blinking light on one side means, I think, I hope.
Absolutely, yeah.
Pull their license if they don't.
And you're talking to the guy here that was, who was against the ordinance, so, I mean, because I remember, um, one gentleman alone lost his life because of it.
That's one of them.
But if we're gonna do it, I just wanna make sure we have it lined out for everybody the same thing.
Will you, um, send that to everybody?
That, yes.
So we can read through it?
Like I say, she took it right out of the ordinance, so it's, shouldn't be any changes, which you can definitely look at.
That's cool.
She's handing out, we'll also have a staff member at PD when we do the inspections as well, and we'll either pass or fail them.
You wanna go ahead and take a copy of that too, just so we can see it? Since we're, we're not studying it right now, but we understand your concern. So the harnesses makes sense, if the seatbelt is what was standard, will you go with that? And the tail lamps, if that's what was standard?
Which means whatever the manufacturer made standard when they manufactured that vehicle.
Okay.
But turn signals, I understand.
But turn signals, we kinda want, is that what our final answer?
I'm more concerned...
You can buy turn signal kits if you want. It's like a golf cart. They don't come with them, but you can add them later if you want them. It's just a kit. It just all depends on you guys, what you decide.
Then we have to change the ordinance, because that's what you have to do.
I think we decided on it when we, when we made it.
The turn signals?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me. My, my whole consideration was the lap belt and the stop signal, because I know there's some brand-new, there's only one.
Okay.
So...
We'll take your judgmental call there.
One other thing I wanna talk to, that's kinda, kinda sensitive maybe, I guess, Austin and I have been talking, there were some things that was brought to, to Austin about my agency or me, and because it's brought by the council, he didn't, he didn't understand what it is. I've, I have too much power. I, I guess I need an explanation for that, something I need to fix to make sure Austin doesn't take heat for something that we've done. I've been receiving phone calls, started last fall, there's a council person that's going into businesses, talking about my agency, and not in a good way. And even gave me the nickname Rambo. I would have gladly have talked about this inside of executive session, but because there's, it's your elected officials, we can't do that. I just want to quit. We try hard to be a professional agency, our equipment, we always make sure it's nice-looking for the city, we train well, everything, but now I know we're questioned sometimes because we go outside the city limits, and wondering why. But when a council person walks into Blue Valley and says, starts screaming about why the police officers think they need to be outside of the city limits, there's reasons. We don't cruise outside the city for no reason. It's either for an accident or helping take a call, it's usually life safety or something. We do have agreements with the sheriff for, we help assist so far out, or if there's nobody on duty. That way, we don't pay housing prisoners, we do pay medical, but we don't pay for dispatch. You know, there's certain agencies that I, that I've spoke with in Kansas, they'll pay anywhere from $30,000 to $100,000 a year for dispatch and jail services. We pay nothing. The way the sheriff looks at it, it's our tax money paying for it anyway. And if we can help outside the city, just around a certain area, we do when we can. We back up, and they back us up in town as well. But the comments about me personally, I take offense. April 18th, I'll be chief 20 years. And we have strived hard in our training, our recognition, leadership, everything, and to have somebody call me Rambo because they, I go off the, I don't know, I guarantee, I do not look like Sylvester Stallone in Rambo, I promise you that. We are expected as department heads to respect counsel, especially when we're in public. Neither department head would like to just see the same thing. If there is an issue, then it goes to Austin, Austin brings it to us. There's, I don't understand that. And Mr. Schröder, I don't know why those were said.
Well, I, I, to remember, I don't remember us specifically ever saying something about too much power, so, and, and I have, no, we have never said Rambo.
Well, that kinda got me, I'm going, "Power, I have the same power I had 20 years ago when I got torn aside."
So, you know, just to clarify that, so, that has not been the discussion.
Well, the one thing I've talked to Austin about was, today it was brought to him about when I'm gone.
Professional development days.
Professional development.
Yeah.
I have not joined any more committees, because it wasn't two years ago, we all had to submit lists of committees and boards we sit on. I've actually dropped off some. I've not gained it at all. Now, the one that does take probably the most time, and it's here and there, and we're talking a day or two, is my IMT, Incident Management Team, and that was approved clear back in 2007, because we all train together across the state, and if something happens, we all converge and take care of it. Same thing would happen if something happened to Mary's, but that's the only thing that's really changed. We just lost our executive director, as you guys lost your chamber commerce person, for our chief's association. Now, we did have an emergency meeting the other day, because, to be honest with you, the state association, it's, it's a pretty, pretty big hit for us, and, but that'll be taken care of, so we shouldn't have to meet again now, so...
Can we hire that person for the chamber? That we're not...
Oh, no, we, well, yeah, I'd be all right.
Just kidding, we don't, we don't have any authority at the chamber.
If we, fine, I've sat on the chief's board, and I'm the longest-running chief on that board. Not many chiefs have been chiefs for this many years. And it's, I find it's a compliment when the governor's office calls and asks if I, say, or KBI calls and I wanna sit on, "We're doing a hiring board, because we wanna hire these new administrators." It's a compliment. Now, am I out of office? Yeah, it's usually, somebody administrative's always here. It's either me, Dave, or one of the two cordials, and me and Dave always have to have a thumb with us. I mean, I've always got my thumb with me, that's why I publish the number on my business cards. I don't know about me. But if there's truly an issue, then I'd really like to hear from the whole council if, if, if there's a problem with my professional development, or is there a certain area that you want me working on that I'm not, that if I concentrate too much on one?
I think professional development is just annoying how many days in total you're away from the office, that's all it is. I think it was just, and it wasn't just you, it was everybody, trying to figure out that it was balanced throughout the department.
See, some of my training, you know, my, my department's a little different to the rest of departments, we have to have a minimum 40 hours training a year for a police department, that's by statute. And it ranges in our officers, anywhere from 40 to even 100, because it depends, you know, sometimes, there's a, there's a specific interview class we use by called Reed, and it's not always available here, but so when it comes available, we send them. But it's, it's, we're very picky who we send to it, we try to get everybody eventually, because it's a $600 class, but it is the premier that teaches you how to interview people. But if somebody has their 40 hours or 50 hours, and all of a sudden that class comes available, I'm gonna find, as long as it's in our budget, we're gonna find a way to send them. The same thing with me, but all of my time out of the office isn't always for training. It could be just a meeting, but Austin knows when I'm gonna be gone. And that's kinda who, that's who I report to, and he knows when I'm gone, he knows when I'm training. Now, training for my department by job description is set by me. Now, if I'm gonna say I wanna train out of state, or if I wanna send somebody else out of state, I bring it to Austin, even if it's just Beatrice, Nebraska, or Lincoln, Nebraska, which is closer to me sending somebody clear out to Dodge City. But because of the, of it sounding like it's big because it's out of state, I want Austin to know that. No, it's only 74 miles away in Lincoln, it's not.
Well, maybe that information just needs to be communicated to the council.
Yeah, that's why I came to council, I mean, especially with the council person, some things like, "We can't talk about executive session, let's, let's do this." I've always had a great relationship with council, right when I've been around almost 20 years, you know, and I would like to keep that relationship going. You know, we try to keep it professional with our department, and try to keep our officers, that's getting harder over time, but we do what we can to make sure they got good equipment and a good, good place to work, so... But I would just like to agree with that, we start treating each other with more respect. And I have no issue with that at all, because to me, if I would sit there and start going off about the councilman in public, I'm quite certain it would come right back to you pretty quick, and that wouldn't be very professional to me at all.
I appreciate that. And we'll try to pay you the same courtesy always. I think we can add a few nods here.
That would be great, so, anything else, I'll be back in my chair.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Okay, so, again, the firefighters put up the, they put the line in for the washer, so thank you firefighters, specifically...
Looks nice.
Landau, not Landau, Lattice Plumbing came in and helped, so thank you for doing that, and it's exciting that they can now wash their uniforms and not take them home. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was about this economic development plan with Jennifer Duffy leaving. I stopped by and talked to Patty Holly about concerns I had that we need more information, we need to be in the loop, we need to break down of expenses, we need to know when people are in, in town, and Patty Holly assured me that they would, um, keep us in the loop, give us more information, and just go onward with that. You guys have any questions about that? But I was so shocked, I, I didn't know Jennifer was leaving, so I was like, so I went to Patty Holly, like, the day after the paper was out, okay. So, I did request a breakdown of the $41,000 that we discussed, because I don't think we ever really received that, so hopefully we can get that from them, so we know what that's going to. I know that's kind of the back around doing it, but we'll do it now, if nothing else. And that is all I had.
Madam Mayor, I can't remember if I read it in the paper, or where I read it, that there was one part that was mentioned, that, that there was a study about the depot, and I didn't realize that that was gonna be part of the study.
Yeah, I asked Patty about that, because in, in this document, it said, "Site planning concepts for Main Street." It said Main Street, I didn't think it was for the UP Depot, so I asked her to look into that, give us more information, so... All right, so whatever I find out from her regarding those, I will be sure and send it to you. That's all I have, understanding committees. I don't have any appointments. City Attorney, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, on roundtable discussion, first, our condolences to Bill O'Bornee. He was a very kind, selfless man, and he'll be missed in our community. Bill O'Bornee?
I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he was a good man. I only knew him for 11 years, but a very good man. Not, take, didn't take any accolades, and did a lot of work. Diane's birthday was yesterday, happy birthday, Diane. I did go to a Partnership for Growth meeting, board meeting, they are, they were emphasizing, they have a very committed board, they're planning a fundraiser, they're, they talked a lot about grant writing, having a workshop, some housing, hopefully, getting some additional workers into the area as a process of that, and so, I mean, you can tell that they're thinking, working hard, so I'm just gonna leave it at that, and so I was glad to opportunity to go there. A couple of quick things, there was, there's a House bill about recording of meetings, all public subject to coma. It, it hasn't gone to be voted yet, but it's audio/video within 24 hours of the meeting, and so, public bodies would be the school board, Marshall County, and obviously us. So we are ahead of that game, because we have ours within the 24 hours, so...
We are, we are not ahead of that game, because it would include things like committee meetings.
Kestner Block.
All committee meetings.
Library Board, everything.
Every, one subject to coma, we'd have to tape?
Everything.
And then we don't know how long we have to keep it, or where, or...
I read that, that they didn't know.
Yeah, that's the big...
But we're in a better place than most people. But we have more committees than most people.
Just another unfunded mandate.
But it hasn't gone anywhere, but anyway, I just thought that, the other thing that I thought was interesting was on the House bills, it said that, and it's gone through the House Committee, requiring state agency responsible for, for awarding economic development incentives to document tax breaks on a website available to the public and performance review by the Legislative Auditing Division. And it said Kansas was one of the few states cloaked in secrecy, and it'll show the success or the failures of the incentives. And the last thing we, time we voted on an incentive, which you were, I was on council, you were on council with me, my concern was, there's no, there's no follow-up.
Right, there's no way to document its success.
They do a cost-benefit analysis, and then it ends, and, and so I was glad to see that Kansas, and it was kinda interesting to think Kansas was behind, is, is one of the few that don't do that.
Not just throwing incentives out and hoping they work.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be good, because it's always good to show that it came to fruition, rather than it didn't produce anything. And then also, there was an article here that I thought applied to us, and I'm gonna read it real quick, it was from the Topeka Planning Commission, and it was talking about cell towers, and it says, "The Planning Commission Chairwoman said federal law bans local governments from restricting the placement of telecommunications equipment such as cell towers and antennas based on health and environmental concerns." Those are the same discussions we had. So that was the Topeka Planning Commission. So the key thing is, everybody, no matter how big or small we are, we're all dealing with the same thing, so those are the only things I wanted to share regarding that. All right, Darlene?
Well, a big thank you to the city crews for clearing off all the snow and never having a weekend off, and it sounded like it's gonna snow again this coming weekend.
Is it supposed to predict it again?
Most of us can be north, the way they're talking now.
Okay, that's good.
Good.
And then, back to Bill O'Bornee, he was a, over a 40-year member of Rotary, and he and his wife started the Toys for Tots, and Marley O'Bornee, you know, ramrodded it for many, many years, and...
I didn't know her, so...
They did a great job.
81?
1981.
1981.
A good soul. Anything else, Darlene? Gina?
Thanks to the crews and the first responders for having to be out in all that snow when everybody else was...
Tucked away, watching it snow.
Yeah.
Terry?
No.
Todd?
I just wanna throw in two cents on Bill O'Bornee too, I mean, you know, he was always, "What can I do to help?", even, you know, help load trucks and things, and you kinda thought, "Well, you know, it's icy here, it's crummy, it's raining, it's..." Nope, he was always the first one there, and...
And no attention for it?
No.
Just in the back.
No, he wasn't seeking glory, he was doing it for all the right reasons.
Oh, he was also a longtime superintendent of schools, that's why I came here.
When did he go?
This weekend. This weekend?
Friday.
Friday.
Oh, heck.
The 15th.
There's, there's a lot of former staff and former staff, I think, at the school